Hey, everyone. It's Evan at City Hall. Just wanted to do a quick public service announcement before we get started. I am operating the computer tonight and Amber is working remote. So if things run less smoothly than usual, you know why, and please be patient. Thank you.
Oh, that's not going to fly at all.
Not a great way to start off 2022.
No excuses whatsoever. Have super high expectations for you. All right, let's just give it just a little bit more here and see if anybody else can join. Evan or Amber, have you guys heard from? Oh, there's Rituja right there. Did anybody hear from TC?
I could listen to everything that everybody was saying. I think I just had to join as a panelist, so.
Again, yeah, that was my slow pickup there. My apologies, and I have not heard anything from TC. Amber, had you?
TC had accepted the invite, but I had not heard otherwise. I can send him a message real quick.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started and maybe he'll maybe he'll join as we get going here. All right, so I would like to call this first planning commission, Managed Planning Commission Meeting of 2022.
Recording in progress.
January 6th Planning Commission Meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to 2022. I'll start out with roll call. Garthik Sutharman. And Garthik's here, he didn't unmute to do that. Mike Bresko.
I'm here.
Present.
Thanks, Garthik. TC, I don't believe I see TC, so he must not be here. So TC Labby not present yet. Josh Amato.
Here.
Karen Malcolm.
Here.
And our vice chair, Rituja Indipure.
Here.
Let me just say, Rituja, thank you for covering for me last December 2nd, since I had a schedule screw up and couldn't attend. So thank you for that.
We really missed you.
I doubt that. Okay. Evan or Amber, is one of you going to read the meeting accessibility statement?
Yes, I will do that. One moment here. Okay. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 2025, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual Planning Commission Meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view or join the meeting via Zoom, please enter into your browser You may also join via mobile or landline by dialing To view live, you may do so via the City of Sammamish website, the City of Sammamish YouTube station, or Channel 21 within Sammamish only. You may also view later at the three above places, City of Sammamish website, City of Sammamish YouTube, or Comcast Channel 21 within Sammamish only. Back to Chair Baughman.
Okay, well, we'll give people a couple of minutes if they want to make non-agenda public comment, and we'll do approvals. So first is approval of this evening's agenda. Anyone have any comments about the agenda for this evening? Seeing no comments, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. And next is approval of the minutes from the December 2nd meeting, the one that I was not able to attend, that I'm sure Rituja handled quite smoothly. So anybody have any comments, corrections, or otherwise for the meeting minutes from that December 2nd meeting? Okay, seeing no comments or corrections, we'll call those meeting minutes approved by common consent. And now let's do a non-agenda public comment. So do we have anyone who is waiting to do non-agenda public comments this evening?
Yes, we have one person with their hand up. I will go ahead and promote them to a panelist. Mr. Stickney, the floor is yours.
Good evening, planning commissioners. The first time actually on TV on your, you know, the city council has been having this happen. So anyway, Happy New Year, Paul Stickney, Sammamish. On the non-agenda comment, would like to talk about a invitation for a little deeper dive into what I believe is the number one ailment in Sammamish, which is housing misdevelopment. Why is housing misdeveloped? Because of the roughly 22,500 homes in Sammamish, about 85% of them were either in the pipeline or constructed as of 1999, when the city incorporated. And Sammamish has added roughly 3,300 homes since, primarily mostly large, single-family homes. So I have a little quote. Housing supplies in Sammamish have been misdeveloped for over four decades. Alleviating housing misdevelopment will add notable holistic sustainable enrichments above and beyond those we presently have and enjoy in our community today. And these enrichments will add far greater value for our residents in the city than for development interests. This to me is a non-zero-sum game. It's not about winners and losers. It's about everybody winning and adding prosperity for posterity. I look at five pivotal actions as a community that we should take to achieve this. Lots of detail behind it, but summed up into five actions. Obtain lacking information. Reduce traffic congestion. Alleviate housing misdevelopment. Enable holistic enrichments. And create inspiring visions. One for 95% of our community and the other for the other 5%. That's it. Less than three minutes. I'll send an email to each of you. If you'd like to meet and chat, cool. And if not, I understand. But I'd encourage it because this is a way forward to span divisions over we ourselves and us and our different ideas on housing. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. I will go ahead and promote the next caller. Caller ending in 6810, the floor is yours. Caller, you are currently muted.
James Eastman, Sammamish, Washington. I used to attend pretty much every single Planning Commission meeting, and then COVID hit and I got kind of lazy. I don't like having to tune in on Zoom or phone call or whatever. I just like coming and showing up in person. So anyways, last month or, you know, a couple of months ago, all the development reg works that you guys worked on hit city council. And, you know, I was not happy that if I wanted to build a house in Sammamish, I had to have my front door facing the street, and I had to have a pathway down the street. You know, I'm like thinking outside the box a little. I don't, you don't necessarily want, you know, people knowing when I go in and out of my house, if I'm on a half acre or an acre or 20 acres, like, who knows which way my front door faces. So I was pretty ticked off that I was being told that I had to have my front door face the street. I let city council know that, but they said, you know what? That's what the Planning Commission approved, and you weren't there. And you know what? They're right. Kelly wasn't in the Planning Commission. I was hoping that they'd change it, and they didn't. So they approved the development regs. I've never seen probably Kelly Hildy so happy. I went back and watched the video. I think she about jumped out of receipt because she was so happy to be done with those development regs. So now that I'm on the losing end of that front door argument, I made my New Year's resolution to start attending Planning Commission meetings again. So here I am and looking at the agenda. And when I comment on today's agenda, I'm not taking one position or another. I'm just commenting on what I see in the city because I want to be heard. And I want to think that if I'm going to go to the Planning Commission meetings for the next year, it's actually going to matter. And when they elect you as a city planning commission official, I think they do it because you're smart, you know what you're doing, and you have good input. So what I see on tonight's agenda is housing. And I'm just a little surprised because I came to the city and have been advocating, I have land in the city for housing for years. And argument and tone has been slowly diminished with another argument that basically says, until there is adequate transportation, we are not going to build another house in this city. We don't care. And I kind of felt that that's kind of remained unchanged even when we sent our growth numbers over to the county. A couple of months ago, we selected option four in the EIF.
15 seconds.
Can I have like my full seven minutes now so I don't have to come back? But anyways, I'll come back at the end of the meeting if I have to. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're all in this together, that this is what the council wants and we can go and go through this exercise. Because looking at the agenda for the next year, that is a lot of work. And if we're going to go through the exercise, I just want to know that it matters.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. And we have one more caller. I will promote them to panelist. Ms. Wickler, the floor is yours.
Hi, Happy New Year. I, first of all, I wanted to thank you for all the work that you have done over the past year. There were a lot of things that were done, and I have found that you guys really do listen to our inputs. You read our stuff. You do follow up, you discuss it. Not important that you 100% agree with people or not, but you need to take the information and have it discussed. And I think that the Planning Commission has made some really excellent recommendations. And because they've been effective, it's been a lot easier when you get to city council because they actually take the work that you do and move forward with it. And sometimes it isn't what you want, or sometimes it need changes later. But I feel that it has been very effective, and I'm really glad. And I was at many meetings where James Eastman also came in the past. So I'm glad he'll be attending again because he has a lot of really good ideas. Also, I think the agenda of tonight is probably one of the more important things that you see. Like, I remember in 2015, when they were doing the tree ordinance or tree regulations update, that was extremely important. And in 2016, it was a big year for stormwater. That was when I was highly involved because the city had been using 1998 code for stormwater. And we needed to get to 2016 or the city wasn't going to be able to have any permits at all. And there was a lot of work done with that. And even though we did that work, there were still two more sessions of stormwater code amendments that occurred and happened. They couldn't even happen in 2017. They were in 2018 and 2019, was the most recent passing. So sometimes it takes quite a bit of time. And I guess my concern for the housing, the housing grant that you're getting, which I think is great and what's being done, is I don't want this to be something that gets done and puts on the shelf. They started the Urban Forestry Management Plan in 2015, and it is a great plan. And it's like you're holding up the website somehow, somewhere. And then we have implementation strategies that are going to come in groups one, two, three, and four. It's going to be, God, 20 years before that stuff gets implemented. We just, we can't do that. We need stuff to move faster. So as I have studied stormwater for seven years and given a lot of data, and I try to provide information, it isn't necessarily my opinion. Sometimes it's just information so that you guys can work. I know Paul Stickney has done a lot of work collecting housing data and things, and the city hasn't been getting their own. So it's really important that we get the data, and there are some steps for doing that on the agenda tonight. But just what you're working on is super important. And there's no way that we can build ourself out of growth problems, and we can't keep building large, single-family homes, which even the Planning Commission knew in 2018, when I remember an ARCH meeting, and you guys did some really good work there. But then I think that housing, I forget what it's called, but that housing thing has just been sitting since 2018.
15 seconds.
Been sitting for three years. So I am super glad that you guys are all attending and participating and discussing and making your recommendations. And thank you so much for the three minutes at the beginning, which is non-agenda, and then the seven minutes afterward that is agenda. I super appreciate it and respect everything you do. Thank you.
That was our last commenter. I'll turn it back to you, Chair Baughman.
Great, thanks, Evan. Maybe I'll just gently remind everybody that's listening in that the way our meetings go is non-agenda public comment at this point, three minutes. And with the intent that agenda-related public comments are after the new business, and that's seven minutes. So just as a reminder for future reference, that's how things are set up. Okay, let's jump into our new business. The first and main item on the agenda this evening is discussion or presentation, I should say, on a grant that was received by the city from the Washington Department of Commerce. And I think Miriam is going to provide that presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Miriam Leitner. I am the Planning Manager overseeing long-range planning here at the City of Sammamish. And I am very excited tonight to share a little bit more about the grant that you have already heard about through public comment. I'm going to go ahead and turn my camera off so you don't have to see me reading from my script. But feel free to interrupt with any questions, and there'll also be time to ask questions at the end as well. I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So tonight, we are going to be talking about the Housing Action Plan and Implementation Grant, otherwise known as HAPPY Grant, from the Washington State Department of Commerce that was recently granted to the, or awarded to the city to increase housing diversity and housing affordability in Sammamish. Before we talk about the grant, I thought it would be helpful to just quickly highlight the city's recent policy and regulation work, which you guys have been deeply involved in over the years, starting with the housing element in the current comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2015 and then amended in 2016. Then in 2017, with extensive input from residents and stakeholders, the city worked on its housing strategy, Sammamish Homegrown, which was adopted in January of 2019. The first phase of development regulation updates also occurred around this time, starting in 2018, and being adopted in February of 2019. These updates address community concerns related to neighborhood character and incentivized affordable housing units through density rounding. The city recently completed the second phase of development regulation updates, and a third phase is planned for late 2022 or 2023. Throughout this time, the city has continued to be an active partner and member of a regional coalition for housing, also known as ARCH, to support the development of affordable housing in our region. The city's housing strategy, Sammamish Homegrown, sets a strong foundation for the city's housing work and contains strategies related to housing themes that you see on screen. The grant that I'll be talking about tonight aligns with the Sammamish Homegrown themes of housing supply and variety and housing affordability. Essentially, it will provide a deeper dive into those two topics. We also thought it would be helpful to highlight significant housing policy themes that we're seeing so that you can better understand how the grant work fits within the broader planning context. This year, the city will start working on the state-required update to our comprehensive plan. And as we're starting to prepare for this work, a lot of our attention is going to the King County Countywide Planning Policies, or CPPs. For cities located within King County, the CPPs are what implement the Washington State Growth Management Act and the Vision 2050 Multi-County Planning Policies from Gidget Sound Regional Council. When looking at the 2021 CPPs, we're seeing a lot more focus on housing equity, ensuring housing access and choice for people of all incomes, correcting historical disparities, and addressing current disparities relating to housing. We also see an emphasis on housing affordability and access, so ensuring that all people, regardless of their income level, have access to a range of housing options across neighborhoods throughout cities so that they can choose what best meets their needs. Housing affordability and access was also a key theme in House Bill 1220. And finally, we're seeing more requirements related to collecting and utilizing data to ensure cities understand and are planning for housing needs, but also that the construction of affordable housing is actually being built. The Housing Action Plan and Implementation Grant, or HAPPY Grant, as I mentioned earlier, was released by the Washington State Department of Commerce this past summer. At the direction of city council, the city applied and was awarded a grant to create a housing action plan. The Housing Action Plan will aim to help the city proactively address the needs for more diverse housing types and more affordable housing within the city. The work is starting now, and will go through June of 2023. And while this seems like a really long time, we have a really packed schedule, as you can see from Exhibit 1 in your packet. The RCW relating to this grant requires several steps, and those have been highlighted in light blue in the exhibit. The grant utilizes a performance-based contract, meaning that you're reimbursed for your expenses based on the completed project components. And the final 20% of this grant is linked to the adoption of the Housing Action Plan. In addition to the benefits that this work is going to bring to both current and future residents, staff are also excited because the grant will allow for an evaluation of the current comprehensive plan housing element, which should help create efficiencies as we prepare for that comp plan update that I mentioned earlier. The scope of work for the Housing Action Plan includes three different actions, each with a series of steps and deliverables. The project team is going to include city staff, staff from a regional coalition for housing, or ARCH, and their consultant, who's going to be selected early this year. This spring, we'll start gathering information and input to better understand the current housing situations and the future housing needs of current residents as well as potential future Sammamish residents. The grant requires that community members, community groups, local builders, local realtors, nonprofit housing advocates, and local religious groups be included in outreach efforts. And in addition to all of those groups, we'll also be engaging local workers and business owners because through the development of Sammamish Homegrown, we saw an impact, or we heard about an impact, rather, to hiring and job retention challenges due to the high cost of housing here and the few housing options available. We'll also be following up with organizations interviewed as part of Sammamish Homegrown to see what changes have occurred and if any new housing needs have emerged. At the same time as we're doing that, ARCH and their consultant will conduct extensive data analysis to understand the items that you see on screen. The results of Action 1 will be compiled into a report and presented to the Planning Commission and city council this fall. Action 2 focuses on strategy development. ARCH and their consultant will identify strategies and other tools to address the needs and the projected housing demands that are identified during Action 1. These strategies will then be further assessed and narrowed down and then shared with the public for their input. The strategies will then be amended as needed before being integrated into the draft Housing Action Plan. The Housing Action Plan will include an implementation schedule and specific metrics so that the city can monitor progress over time, very similar to what was done and developed for the Urban Forest Management Plan. And then finally, we have Action 3, which relates to project adoption. We anticipate having two meetings with both of Planning Commission and city council. The first one to review and provide comment on the draft Housing Action Plan, and the second being a public hearing to ensure that the community and stakeholders have the opportunity to provide feedback as well. The city council public hearing would be scheduled for early June of 2023, allowing us to reach the grant deadline of adoption before June 15th. As I previously mentioned, the grant utilizes a performance-based contract. So I thought it would be helpful to share what the key deliverables will be that we're going to be sharing and providing to commerce in line with the scope of work that we just discussed. These deliverables include the Public Engagement Plan as well as the current and future housing needs assessment results, both of which are related to Action 1. And the draft Housing Action Plan relates to Action 2 with the adopted Housing Action Plan relating to Action 3. Again, this final item is required to be 20% of the overall project budget. Finally, I wanted to close tonight by just sharing a timeline for legislative review as well as public outreach and engagement. As you can see, you'll be hearing from us several times throughout the project, and we're really looking forward to getting your input along the way as we work together to develop this plan. We'd also really appreciate your help in reaching out to fellow community members and encouraging them to participate in the various outreach activities that we'll be having this spring, as well as providing input on the strategies this coming fall. So with that, I will hand it back to Chair Baughman to open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. All right. I'll just mention for those listening in that TC's been able to get his promotion. He's joined us. Welcome, TC. All right, does anybody have any questions for Miriam?
I do. Miriam, I think you started the presentation off with a couple of concepts, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate on them and help us understand that a little bit better. So I know you mentioned housing equity. So I would really like to understand, you know, what the definition is, what do we really mean by housing equity? And I think the other thing that you mentioned was historical sort of actions or disparities that have been in our community. And so I would like to know in the context of Sammamish, what that means.
Sure, that's a great question. So I would say at a policy level, we're seeing an emphasis on housing equity. And I think in Sammamish, it can look a little different, right? But I think looking at both disparities when it comes to age of residents, economic background of residents, ethnicity, race of residents, looking at all of those different ways and seeing how that relates to housing and who's able to move here and who's not, who's been pushed out of Sammamish because they can no longer afford to live here. And so part of the grant requirements, and you'll see them within the scope, is to look at displacement, who's been impacted. And as we start to look at those strategies and narrow that down, how those strategies potentially could create displacement and what actions can we put in place to prevent that from happening further? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, so when you look at that data for disparity, how far back do you go?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And I know we've had some conversations here and there with King County, and I think they're looking at providing some technical support to cities through the CPP work to help look at those more historic disparities that we might not have access to from our data. But I'm not sure exactly yet what that will look like.
And will what goes into like the evaluation of this data for equity, will that be something that comes back to the Planning Commission? And are we able to choose what parameters to kind of look at? Or is that going to be a big dump of data?
It will probably be a big dump of data. Again, we don't have the consultant selected yet, and I think that will be part of our conversations with them. It will definitely show up in the report that we provide you all, but based on the timeline and how we're getting things to commerce, we'll share the results of the needs assessment with them first, and then it will be coming to you guys. So I don't know that it will be an input point for you all, but it definitely will be something that you could talk about as we do some of that community outreach and engagement. You can provide some comments related to that then, and we could work in some questions that kind of prompt that conversation since you won't have an opportunity to provide input as a formal group later on that particular subject.
So my second question was about the historical disparities. Do we have examples of that in Sammamish? Redlining or other sort of discrimination? Housing discrimination here? Or are there resources that you can provide us?
At this point, I don't have enough information to talk about that, but it's definitely something we'll be looking at, and I will be better prepared to answer in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions? Josh?
So I think I saw this in Homegrown, and part of what this work plan is going to do is review what we've done before. And one of the, I think, one of the goals in Homegrown was to create more housing that would be able to house people who work in Sammamish. I'm curious, as part of this, if there will be an analysis of what our businesses pay workers and then what it's going to cost, what a realistic housing cost would be for someone who works in Sammamish to actually live in Sammamish? Is that like on the radar or anything like that? I'm just concerned we might have some goals that might be really difficult to meet and that it's really spelled out.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things this grant will be looking at is housing for all levels of income, all varieties of housing, right? So we So we have been talking, we're drafting our survey questions, and those will go to City Council next month. But we're looking at different ways to craft questions that will get to kind of those varying income levels of folks. And we also are going to be reaching out to businesses. So I don't, I'm not sure how forthcoming they'll be in terms of how much they pay workers or not, but we can probably get it from some surveying of the workers themselves and asking them, you know, where their household income falls, which would really be the indicator for what what housing AMI is they're eligible for. That makes sense.
It does, yes, thank you.
TC?
Thank you, Chair Baughman. I I think that for me, as I conceptualize what it is that that we're trying to do here, a lot of this comes down to trying to understand how many of the workers of Simamish come from outside of the area and how many of them desire to be like Simamish residents, right? And what that disparity is. And I I think until we're able to encapsulate and quantify what that disparity is, or what percentage of those workers have to travel from outside of the area, or what percentage of those workers say, you know, we commute X or Y number of hours. This ends up being a lofty goal with the best intentions, but with maybe not the best data behind it, right? I I think that there are a lot of folks that might, you know, and and I'll pull an abstract example. Folks might say, well, I desire to go off and live in Medina. I want to be neighbors with, you know, folks who who live in an area, an area significantly more affluent than the than the area that I that I live or work in or contribute to today. But but I I I think that a significant portion of the reality is that, you know, folks live in an area that they can, you know, afford and live in, participate in an area that is, you know, besuited to their lifestyle. And we need to make sure that we have the appropriate services enabled to make sure that we provide the best quality of life for, you know, the folks that are within our within our community.
Yeah, I mean, and I would say it's not just about people providing services here, living here. It's also about people who currently live here, who maybe have kids who moved out and who want a smaller home, right? Or who can't have two or three floors and need that accessible home. And and so it's it's both about thinking about, okay, who potentially may be interested or want to live in Simamish in the future, as well as who's living here now and would like to stay here. And what does that look like for them, you know, ten, fifteen years out? And how do we ensure that we have a housing stock that really meets the needs of all our community members here? I need to, this is something, and I know Medina, you know, has a certain reputation, but this is something that should be looked at on a county level, on a statewide level, because these are all policies that are happening regionally around us. It's not just Simamish being asked to look at housing diversity and housing affordability. It's the entire state, because it's a statewide issue. And so trying to keep that in mind, and it might look different in different cities, right? We all have different needs. But it is something that that's happening regionally and statewide as well.
I I I tend to agree at a fundamental basis, but I, you know, one of the things that I want to kind of pose back is at what point are we prioritizing the need of potential potential residents or future residents over the needs of the residents who are within our, you know, city limits today? Right? How much of what it is that we're looking for is is potentially looking at a problem? And 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 I want it to seem, I don't want it to seem like a problem that doesn't exist today, right? We have to do that that future planning. But how many of our residents today are being forced out or priced out actually compared to? I I think prospectively, right? Like, like, we're talking about, you know, folks who have had, you know, children move on, where we're talking about, you know, one and two family, you know, or one and two-person households that, you know, can't can't, you know, continue to exist in that two or three-story house, right? Like, what what is the actual practical implication of that? What what is the demographic or what is the actual, you know, number of people who have said, I have to move out of Simamish because I can no longer afford to live here? As opposed to the the number of people who are saying, I would love to move to Simamish, but I can't afford to, right? I I I think that those are two very disparate groups of folks, and and we need to, we we need to, we need to weigh those individually, and we need to understand, you know, what that means.
Sure. Yeah, and I think, you know, our data collection, I'm hopeful, between some of the more qualitative data that we'll be getting through our surveying and then as well as looking at different statistics that the consultant will be working with, we'll have a better sense of those two things that you're talking about and how the numbers stack up and the data stacks up in both directions.
Okay, who else has questions or comments? Parthik, I'm sure you can mute yourself.
I think I I'm on the same page as TC here. I just want to understand the goal of this entire exercise, because it looks like affordability is not the one lead goal here, right? You know, so correct me if I'm wrong. We want housing diversity, we want to support a varied population and so on. So what what exactly defines the goal of this entire exercise here? Housing diversity seems to be one, but it has to be driven by a set of tenants or some sort of a understanding of, you know, how we shape this community, right? So what is the goal behind that shaping of that community? And and definitely, I can agree that affordability is one of them, or are there other such goals?
So I would describe this grant as providing housing options, right? And providing housing options means a range of different housing types based on your needs. It also means a range of affordability levels based on what people can afford. So it's both of those things together, right? It's affordability and it's it's diversity in housing stock. And it's making sure also that it's available throughout your city, right? You're not having certain neighborhoods that are just affordable housing or certain neighborhoods that are, you know, dedicated to one housing type, that it starts to get a little bit more evenly distributed. And that's that's really the goal of this grant, is to present housing options across the city to a wider range of people.
But what is what is the practical implication of that? If if the goal is to ensure that there are not specific neighborhoods that are dedicated to one or the other particular type of housing, are we then saying that we're that the city itself has been a promote going off and annexing or knocking down single-family homes and in multiple neighborhoods in order to build more affordable housing so that we can have more affordable housing across all neighborhoods? I I guess I'm I'm trying to understand how it is that this that this goal actually translates to a practical application within the city as it's designed or as it exists today.
I noticed Kelly turned her camera on. Do you have something to say?
Sure, I can give you actually an example that's in your backyard, and that's Town Center. Town Center requires ten percent of all new development to be affordable, and you can't tell me which one's affordable. It's integrated. And so that is, that's a practical example of one tool in the toolbox that the city can consider, is that inclusionary zoning throughout the city. If, I mean, that's just an example, but that would be, again, one example that we have currently underway.
Yes, so I
I I apologize. So, you know, Kelly, I I appreciate that example, but as Miriam, you know, noted, that, you know, one of the goals is is to not create, you know, specific, you know, zones or districts or groups or clusters or kind of however you want to term it of housing that is deemed one versus the other. So so how is City Center, as an example, not going off and creating a a pocket, if you will, of housing of a particular type, right? Isn't that counter to the goal of what it is that we're talking about here?
Actually, no, it's not. What it is, is it is housing diversity. So you have in the Town Center, you have townhomes, you have apartments, and you eventually will start to see single-family residential being built. So there's that housing diversity. When it comes to housing affordability, ten percent of those homes are affordable at eighty percent AMI. So you can have a home that sold, for example, I'm just going to put them out there, five hundred thousand, and then you have the market rate, which is, you know, eight hundred thousand, but they look exactly the same. So you're including that diversity of housing within a subarea, and you're including the affordability that is integrated into that subarea. So you can't say Town Center is affordable, because it's not. If anyone's looked at the real estate postings for some of those homes in Town Center, it's not affordable. But there are some of them that are, and that's a very small percentage. So that's just, again, it's an example of how you can, of one of the tools that are, that is an option in, you know, for the city to consider. Does that answer your question or kind of clarify where I was going with that example?
Not really. I mean, I'm trying to understand how it is that Town Center itself is not a pocket where there is a statistically larger percentage of homes that are affordable compared to any other pocket of, you know, what, you know, if you went off and you said Heritage Hills or Trossachs or like, like, pick any of the other areas of Simamish, right? Like, I I don't know all of the names, but I'm trying to trying to figure out how it is that we're going to go off and we're going to provide housing equity across the entirety of the city, right, without defining, you know, a geographical lines that says, oh, hey, look, over here, you know, City Center is, you know, more affordable than anywhere else, right? Like, you you see where I'm going?
Yes, I do. And I think what I was doing with my example is showing that, hey, you can take something like the Town Center Subarea, and that could be expanded. It's just, yeah, you're right, it's a pocket. It's a it's a small area within the city, as it currently is today. It's just the current status. But what we're we're talking about is ideas like that and other tools in the toolbox that could be used across the city. So you don't have pockets, so you're not creating pockets. The only reason I brought up Town Center is that it does have inclusionary, sorry, I have a hard time with that word, zoning that is attached to, it has its own zoning code. So just imagine, you know, excuse me, expansion of that or expansion of other tools or other policies that could help provide that diversity and affordability that is integrated in into the city where you don't have very distinct pockets. So it's just kind of expanding on one example that we have here in the city currently.
So can I, I'm sorry, can I, in the interest of giving other people a chance to ask questions, can we move on and and let Josh, who's got his hand up, ask a question?
I'll make it quick. You said it was a performance-based grant. So in the ones that are highlighted in blue, is anyone going to be looking at, you know, the outcomes of those, like, our strategy and go, that's not good enough? You don't get the money? Or is it just a timeline-based performance? How how are they measuring the success of our project?
Sure. So my understanding is that if we, sorry, every time somebody lowers their their hand, my screen changes. It's very distracting. My understanding is that we are paid based on delivery of certain items. So that Public Engagement Plan, the results of the Needs Assessment Report, the Draft Housing Action Plan, and then the Adopted Housing Action Plan, as long as we produce those items, they live up to, you know, what we committed to in the grant. We can show that we did the work and that we deliver those on time. We'll be reimbursed for those.
Mike or Karen, I don't know that we've heard from either of you. I don't remember, but do you have any questions? Go ahead.
I do. You know, it's very expensive to build here in Simamish. How how do you build something that can be affordable? You mentioned some tools in your toolbox. Are there tools in there that bring the cost down for qualifying people? Is that how that works? I'm speaking to Kelly.
Sorry. Yeah, sometimes I went to to incentivize affordable housing. There's some of the tools that I can think of off the top of my head are, for every affordable housing you put in, you get like a point five additional market rate unit. And that's a very popular tool to encourage affordable housing. So they get more density by building affordable housing units, discounts on impact fees, expedited permitting review. I'm just trying to think of all the different incentives I'm aware of. So there are some incentives out there, and I think that's what part of this project we'll be looking at, or what those tools are and what makes sense for Simamish. So that I just kind of hit the top of the, you know, example list, but there's many more. I'm just not coming to my
Okay, could we talk for a minute more about the Town Center? You said, you know, you'll have an apartment that's affordable next to an apartment that's full cost? How does that, how does that happen? How does that work?
So what happens in Town Center is that, like I said, ten percent of all new development has to be affordable. And so a covenant gets recorded on title that requires that unit to be affordable for fifty years. And so, but it also requires that the unit are, in in the case, it could also be a single-family home or a townhome, has to look and feel the same as a market rate unit. So you can't, you can't look at a development like SAM Apartments or Sky Apartments or, I always refer to the Ichigo Apartments. I know it has a name now, the Town Homes. You can't tell me which one there is. I can't even tell you which one's affordable. I'd have to go talk to ARCH and ask them which one is affordable. And and that's the intent, is that it's blended into the development, so.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
How about Mike? I don't think we've heard from him.
Since you put me on the spot, you know, I I frankly think some of the questions are a little premature. And and the reason for that is, as I read through the action plan, there's a lot of gathering data, gathering input from the community, surveying the community and so forth. So I'm, I think a lot of what we're questioning right now will be a lot clearer once we've got the data to look at. So I I I think the the action plan is pretty good and solid. The only concern I have is the touch points. It looks like there's just really not all that many touch points when we will see and be able to comment along the way. So that would be a, please consider if there's opportunities that we could provide, you know, sort of interim input. I would appreciate that.
Sure. Kelly and I can look at the timeline, and if nothing else, what I can do is I can provide a report to Evan that he can share with you all on progress and a way for you guys to provide feedback back to me. But we'll try to see if we can fit a meeting or two in as well.
And you know, the the benefit of that is that then there's not as much, we we can do fine tuning along the way versus, so here's almost final, and then you find that there's a lot of disagreement about that.
Absolutely.
One question I had, Miriam. There's a few terms in here that I think, I I'm, my question is, will there be an effort, or maybe that's a consultant thing, to define what the term means? So the one that's really super obvious is, you know, diverse housing. What is that, you know? And I'm not asking what that means. What I'm saying is, it's a, it seems like a term that would be good to spend some time deciding what that means before we, you know, dive into the whole gathering data, surveying and so forth. And then, like, another one, which is even a little more vague, that I think in here says, what is the state of housing in Simamish? What what does that mean, right? I think I kind of know what it means, but it's probably, so is there, is there, do you think that there will be some time spent on defining some of those kinds of terms so that we at least can get past that part of the discussion and into what we really find out?
Absolutely, yeah. And I think some of those will be kind of simplifying the language and making it more clear, and some of it will also be data-driven, right? So for me, the state of housing, there's certain metrics that we'll look at and identify. So for me, the state of housing, there's certain metrics that we'll look at and identify um in partnership with Arch. So we'll definitely come back and clearly define those. And if there's more examples where you think it would be helpful to do that, please feel free to send them my way and we'll make sure that we include those.
Yeah, I know that there's a whole bunch of stuff around affordable, the word affordable housing and what those metrics are.
Yeah.
And I think part of that issue here is that because those exist, we get very focused on that piece because we've talked about it so much. But I think the other parts are pretty interesting, but it's really the question of how you define housing diversity. Is it number of bedrooms, square footage, you know, blah. I mean, the, the list is, is potential list is very long. And if we, if we define that and then we gather data, that information is pretty useful. If we don't define that, we may not even know what people's feedback really was. So I think that's worthwhile.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. TC, go ahead.
As I look at the information within the agenda tonight, I see that there's a a dollar amount associated with the award to the city. Is there I, I understand that there's a particular set of deliverables associated with maybe achieving that. Do we have uh, or has there been identified uh how it is that that fund, how, how it is that that grant is being spent? Does it fund the headcount? Does it go directly to your consultant? Does it go into general fund? Is that paying for additional road sanders? Like, do, do we know like where this is going?
Yeah. So the majority of that money will be going to the Arch consultant, who will be doing a lot of the more sophisticated data analysis for us. There's a small amount of money that's gonna help cover some of the outreach costs. So anything that we need to mail, any translation interpretation that we need. Um, and we're working with Arch right now on kind of figuring out what that split will look like. Um, but the majority of it is going to go to the consultant.
So, I, I, and, and forgive me for boiling this down and making it super simple in my mind, because I'm a very simple person. We've been awarded a grant and we're gonna turn around and award the majority of that grant to a consultant.
That's correct because we have, so we're doing a lot of the work in-house. We have a small team between us and Arch who's gonna be doing a lot of the compiling of the reports, who's gonna be doing all of the community outreach work. What we don't have in-house is people that have the technical knowledge to look through all of that data, to analyze it, to dissect it in certain ways. Um, and so that's where we really need the help and that's why we're using this investment to cover that cost.
So how do we, and, and I want to shy away from using the term guarantee, right? But how do we ensure that the funds that we distribute to a consultant as part of this grant actually goes to generating beneficial information to the city? Or in, or generating beneficial data to future residents of the city? Like, 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 how do we know that we're actually going to get a, a statistically informative uh opinion or prospectus of the data that's available?
So we are holding, so we have that specific scope that's within your packet and exhibit one. And so there's certain elements of that, that we know the consultant is going to be working on and that's what's going into the RFP that will be issued, that we'll be reviewing. Um, I'll be part of that review committee to ensure that we find a good match for what we need. Um, and we have regular project meetings with both Arch and the consultant to ensure that we're on track, that we're meeting all those things that are part of that scope and that we feel comfortable with what's being delivered and the approach. That's pretty standard with what we do with most of our consultants. So far, so good.
Okay, thank you, Miriam.
Anybody else have questions or comments?
I just have one observation or question. Um, who's this? I mean, would we be sending out surveys to Sammish residents or you know, who, who, from, from where do we collect the data? And what's the process here?
Sure. So um, we are planning to do a survey of Sammish residents. I'm not completely certain exactly what that's gonna look like yet. We're still figuring that part out. We're also planning to do some other forms of outreach. So we'll have a connect Sammish page with some other tools. We'll probably have a couple of virtual meetings. If the weather gets really nice, we might have an in-person outdoor meeting. We'll see. But we'll try to do different outreach approaches to meet people where they are as much as we can.
And, and I gotta, I gotta ask, and, and this is, you know, the, I, I think the pragmatic side of me, how much outreach is going to be done to people who have left the community to ask them why they left?
That's gonna be a hard one because I don't have a magic database, right, of everyone who's moved away. Um, what I do have are addresses of people within the city. So I think it would rely on kind of word of mouth and people asking you know, neighbors that they're still in contact with who moved away to complete a survey or to participate in some way. And we can also use social media and those kind of tools, but it's really relying on people who, to hear about it, to respond.
I, I don't know. I, I, I think that, you know, a, a lot of what we're talking about and a lot of what has been brought up over the course of time is talking about folks who have been priced out of Sammish and we're not reaching out to them to figure out why it is that they left. We are leaving a statistically significant portion of the population that has very, very valuable data out of the data gathering process, right? We can go off and we can look at and we can poll current residents and say, why did you come here? Right? Or, or why have you stayed here? Right? Those are two very, very informative pieces. But if we are not looking at the tail end of that, which is why did you leave, then every example that says, oh, you know, fo- folks who live in two-story homes just can't afford to live here anymore because they can't get up the stairs, right? I, I'm, I'm making stuff up, right? And, and if we're not going off and actually trying to find that data in order to be able to say X number of people left because of housing disparity or, or Y number of people left because they can no longer afford to be here after raising children or, or whatever it is, then, then it, then it's, it's, it's empirical. It, it, there, there's no data behind it. And, and we can't make policy and we can't make judgment and, and we can't make decision based on, on feeling. There has to be something behind it, right?
Right. I totally agree with you, but I also would counter with, how do you obtain that data? Because for us, we need a data source, right? We need an address to pull that we can mail something. We need, you know, are they part of the census? Like, how do we obtain that information to reach out to those people? So if you have ideas, I am totally open to hearing them. I think that's just the challenge that we have to overcome to reach.
You go and look at everybody that's moved within the last three hundred and sixty-five days. You send them a letter, a, a letter message, you know, or, or address to them and it forwards to whatever their new address is. Right? And, and you, and you assume that they've got mail forwarding going.
Yeah. And I think this is, this is, it's, it's, it's a good question and a challenge that um, I think we can take back to Arch and um ask, ask that as part of the selection and evaluation process for, again, selecting the, the consultant. Um, how would, how, what is the best way from a professional standpoint to collect that type of information? Because that's exactly why we are going to get a consultant to help us with this um type of data collection. It's because some of this, we don't know. So.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think Mike had his hand up for a moment.
Yeah, I did, but Kelly actually addressed that. I, I was gonna give a suggestion because there's a number of people that uh, you know, have, there are two people living in a house that has, you know, four, four or five bedrooms and, and that would be another, you know, within the city you could survey. But Kelly, what you said, you know, you'd hope that the consultants would have techniques like that. So, so you kind of addressed it, but there's a specific suggestion. And TC, I, you know, as Kelly said, having that data is important. Uh, it's part of the, the, I guess, the thesis that the livability for a life cycle in Sammish requires the ability for some people to downsize and downsize into something that would be more affordable than when they were living with like three kids and two dogs and everything else. So.
Yeah, Mike, I, I totally agree with you and, and, and I think that, you know, for me, it really comes down to a point of, you know, putting the numbers down so that we can understand what that is. Because trying to go off and, and and derive and then enforce or enact policy based on feeling is a, a very lofty goal, but the reality is that, that there needs to be something substantial behind it, right? I, I can make a lot of decisions, you know, personally, professionally, based on my feelings. But if I, if I don't have the statistical analysis to support what it is that I'm going off and doing, then I, I, I don't, I, I can't justify what it, what it looks like long term.
And I will guarantee you, we will not be developing policy off of our feelings. It will be based off of data and stakeholder invol- and involvement as well as public um comment. And that's, that's how we, that's how we get to our policy. So um, I am very, I am looking forward to this project. I'm looking forward to seeing what this data brings. I'm looking forward to hearing from our stakeholders and from our community members um, who have always been vocal. You get to hear from them at your meetings all the time. And I think all of that put together is going to help um, base some really good policy and implementation strategies like we do with every long-range planning effort. So. That's my uh call out for anyone who's listening tonight on channel twenty-one YouTube or uh, uh, Facebook to please participate in this process. We need to hear from you, Sammish residents.
Oh, you know, there's thousands of them uh that are watching right now, Kelly.
Tell, tell your friends, tell your neighbors.
Tell everyone, tell everyone. If I could just
add a link to.
Tell a really good story real quick for all of you. You'll find this funny. Hopefully you'll find this funny. Um, when we were presenting the development regulations to uh city council in early December, um, my son found out that we were gonna be on channel twenty-one. Well, I don't live in Sammish. I, I, I live outside of Sammish. So the only way he could access the broadcast of that presentation was through YouTube. And he was so excited because he's like, oh, my gosh, my mom's on TV, my mom's on TV. And there are four people watching at this time. And I'm like, oh, I'm trending, but I wasn't. Anyway, it's just, you know, I want to encourage people to please watch these meetings. City Council, Planning Commission, they are so important, especially when you're trying to shape your community. We need more than four people to me again. And not including my son. So it doesn't live in Duval or live in Sammish. So anyway, there you go. That's my call for everyone.
And one other question I wanted to ask maybe from Miriam is um, I never heard anything about, is this something that is, um, particularly, I would think Arch would have feedback about this, that's been done in other communities? Um, something similar or exactly the same or what was their experience? And to what extent are we kind of getting some feedback about that? Because flailing around, you know, with what we should do could be unproductive and if three other cities have done it in the last five years and could say this is lessons learned, that seems like it would be useful if that's the case.
Absolutely. Um, I do know, I think City of Linwood recently completed one. Um, and I think we can talk a little bit more with Commerce to try to identify past grant recipients and see if we can talk with them as well. We also will be asking, I think in the RFP, I'm hoping, as we work with Arch to develop that um, for examples of previous experience and kind of lessons learned and things like that, that would help inform our work here.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? I would just find, my final comment would just be that I, I, um, thanks, Miriam, for the presentation. I look forward to seeing what this does because it's kind of a, it could be a hot potato, kind of a topic in the, in the community. So it'll be interesting to see which direction it goes and, and what happens. Um, and I really, at least for my part, hope that we can not get so focused on the affordability question that we miss out on a lot of the other interesting parts of the conversation. So I, I hope we keep it that way. Um, I'll look forward to seeing what happens. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is some uh recognition, which I think maybe Evan was gonna take care of that.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you, Mark. Let me get things situated on this multiple screens here. All right. I think everybody can see my screen. Uh, Evan Fisher with the DCD.
Evan?
Yes?
All, all I'm seeing still is the grid of all the participants.
Oh, no. Standby. Maybe if I do that. I think you can see my screen now, but maybe the viewers at home cannot. Um.
I'm still seeing the grid of participants. It flashed your screen for a second for me at least. Um.
Okay. Apologies. This is why uh we're excited for Amber to return.
I know your strategy. You don't want to do anything too well or you'll be asked to do it again later. I always forget that I need to have some uh dad jokes ready for these awkward pauses when they happen.
I already provided a story.
That's true.
I got one. Sorry.
Hey, Mark, did you hear about the sausage maker that backed into the meat grinder? He got a little behind in his work.
I actually have heard that one. I didn't remember what the punchline was, but I have actually heard that one. Okay, Evan, I think you just need to rearrange your screen so we can see whatever we're supposed to see.
Excellent. Can you see PowerPoint right now?
No, we see your Microsoft Teams chat.
Oh, that's less productive.
Yeah, but I can see all of the nonsense that you guys are talking about me. So noted.
There you go.
Wow, this has gotten weird. Okay. Um, I, but I'm worried the public cannot see right now. Kelly? As, oh, okay. I think we're all set. Okay, we'll give this a go. Again, it's a recognition of service and maybe not. Um. Let me just switch these around.
Oh, it looks like we, um, the public can see you. Um, Mary just messaged.
Okay, that sounds great. All right. Thank you for your patience. Uh, sorry that was painful. Um, Evan Fisher with DCD and uh, just before we close out tonight's meeting, we want to take a few moments to recognize the the service of two of our commissioners whose terms are sadly coming to an end at the end of this month. And as we've canceled the uh January twentieth meeting, uh, this, this is our last meeting with them. Uh, those two commissioners are of course Chair Baughman, who's held position six, and Vice Chair, uh, Rituja Endapure, who has held position seven. Uh, both Rituja and Mark were appointed in twenty eighteen and have dedicated long hours on so many of their Thursday nights to help move our community forward. We greatly appreciate their time, dedication and effort uh during their terms and are very sad to see them coming to an end. Uh, during their terms, Rituja and Mark have contributed extensively on so many different projects and initiatives. Uh, and quickly, I'd like to showcase some of that work. Uh, first in, in twenty eighteen, we go back to things like the housing strategy, which we discussed a little bit tonight, uh, known as Sammish Homegrown Sign Code Updates and began it, and began uh longer-term projects like the Urban Forest Management Plan and the interim uh Development Regulations, which became Phase One Development Regulations. In uh twenty nineteen, we did Title Twenty-four Update, a land use map amendment, uh shoreline master program update, and uh began one of Mark's all-time favorite projects, the wireless communication facilities. Uh, in twenty twenty, we didn't get quite as much uh knocked out because of our, our long COVID break, but we continued with wireless and uh began our Phase Two Development Regulations updates. And then in twenty twenty-one, we're all familiar with the, the good work we did last year, uh, which included the, the UFMP Strategic Implementations Plans, uh, Community Visioning, School Impact Fees. Uh, we wrapped up and adopted the wireless communication facilities and um, as Mr. Eastman's And as Mr. Eastman stated in public comment earlier, our Phase Two Development Regulations Updates were adopted by City Council on December 14th. And as we're recognizing Mark and Retuja, I think it's also worth just recognizing the Planning Commission as a body. The City Council on record said numerous times of how thankful they were for the work that this body put in. And the regulations were adopted 7-0 with very few changes made from what the Planning Commission recommended. So great work to all on that. And then finally, staff would like to just express how much we've appreciated Mark and Retuja's time on the Planning Commission and really how much we're going to miss you. Your willingness to dive deeply and thoroughly into complicated and sometimes dry materials, thinking of wireless here, has helped produce great work products and have had a positive impact for the community. Your level of dedication to the community and care and thoughtfulness on its behalf is truly special, and we've appreciated you both very much. We wish you the best of luck on whatever future ventures will occupy your Thursday nights, and we look forward to seeing you again hopefully soon. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Chair Baughman, and again, just like to express thanks for all of your service.
Thank you, Evan. And let me just take a second and say that I've known Retuja now for about five years. And we've spent lots of Thursday nights together and other times as well. And it's been a privilege and a pleasure to work together, Retuja. So thank you for your leadership on the Planning Commission and for being part of it. It's been fun.
And I would second that, Mark. It's been awesome to work with you, you being an amazing chair, always letting others speak before you asked your question, right from the first time you became a chair. And I've been very fair to all of us. I don't think we had any Robert's Rules issues in any of our Planning Commission meetings. And you've been a wonderful teacher to all of us here, I think. And yeah, I'll miss working with you. And I really, really, really want to thank the staff. And Kelly, I think you probably have been with us since day one. So you've seen a lot and just wanted to say what an incredible staff you have. You've always been there to answer our questions, dive deep into the details, and really taken all the suggestions that we've had over the years. And I think one thing that I'd like to point out is that in all of the work that Evan usually showcased, I think Mark and I have been pretty unanimous in most of our decisions when we sign the letters of recommendations to the city. I think there's probably been like maybe one issue on which we kind of disagreed. But other than that, you know, we've always sort of voted along the same lines. And I think Mark's expertise in his field has really brought in the depth. And that's why I think these development regulations have become so robust because of his experience that he brought in from his professional life. So thank you, Mark. This has been a great journey.
I will say, in case those of you are wondering, I did apply to re-up. But of course, that is a very, very unknown question. So if this is my last opportunity to be a famous star on cable television in Sammamish, then let me just say it's been great working with all of you. I look forward very much, very much to the day that we can actually meet again in person, face to face. That would be one of the most high on the list reasons why I would like to continue so that someday we could do this again in person. I would really look forward to that. And I would second Retuja's comments about the staff. It's been really fun to get to know a wide variety of people on the staff over the years and work together. It's been a great experience. At this level, I think the Planning Commission is kind of a special thing because you really do have the chance to have some influence in the community. But the sort of time load and burden that is involved is considerably less than, you know, the City Council and some others. So I think the Planning Commission is a real sweet spot for a lot of people, and it's been great to be a part of it for these four years. So thank you to everybody involved, and thanks, Evan, for that little acknowledgement and recognition. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, and thank you for bearing with me during the awkward silence.
Well, you know, I guess you just have to have the right expectations. Okay, let's, oh, go ahead, Josh.
All right, I just want to pop in with a little recognition because I think it's important that a member of the commission says something too. I first joined a couple of years ago, and Mark and Retuja, you were both extremely welcoming, very kind, and showed me the ropes. And I really appreciate that. And Mark, you've been a wonderful chair. You've been level headed, thoughtful. Like Retuja said, you let people speak first. You come in at the end with an incisive comment or piece of advice that I wish I had thought of while I had been asking my questions. And I really hope that the council strongly considers your application because if you're not on here, I think you're going to be greatly missed. And Retuja, you have offered many comments that, you know, you and I have different viewpoints, and I've always thought that it's really important that what you say, you know, has been said because I know it's not something I would have said. So, you know, your perspective, I think, is going to be missed greatly. And I really appreciate the thoughtful involvement you two have had and look forward to seeing you outside of this when we can all meet again, so.
Thank you, Josh. All right, let's move on to public agenda related public comment.
Okay, I'm just going to remind everyone, our callers, that five minutes, I'm sorry, seven minutes is allotted for agenda public comment. And if you would like to give comment, you can join via our Zoom link or by dialing in number 253-215-8782, entering passcode 91076897869. When you do join, you can enter *9 to raise a virtual hand, and you will be unmuted when it is time to give your comment. And then I will give this over now to Evan so he can see which callers we have.
Great. Currently, we have two callers that have raised their hand. I will go ahead and unmute the first. I believe it is Mr. Eastman. Mr. Eastman, whenever you're ready.
James Eastman, Sammamish, Washington. I did not know that it was Retuja and Mark's last meeting potentially. I feel like I do know both of you and will say thank you for all your service. Mark, I do hope you run again. I heard all the other comments made. In addition to being level headed, you have a construction background, and that I just think is invaluable. And maybe I say that because I'm a construction guy, and I see projects go together and can conceptualize and know what they take to get done. But I just think being on the Planning Commission without skill set is of much value. So I hope to see you there next year. And back to the agenda earlier. I'm just still trying to wrap my head around it, not judging it one way or another. But I just wish I knew more on this grant. Like, did we apply for a grant? Did we say we want to focus our time on this? We're going to apply for some money so we can go do this housing study? You know, there's all these actions and, you know, now we're committing to certain deliverables because of this grant. And I just would like to know the history of it. And I just, I guess I, you know, I agree with what was talked about earlier. Well, you know, 7-0, the City Council approved development regs. I mean, the work you guys did was appreciated, it was approved, and you guys did good work. And there's no better feeling than putting your time and effort and your energy into something and then having it be of value. Mark and Retuja, you're probably the only ones that remember this, but there was a time where I felt that the Planning Commission was asked to go do something, and they did exactly what they were asked. And what they did was politicized, it was twisted. I believe even some Planning Commission member or two members resigned over, maybe one didn't get reelected. But it, the work that they put in was exactly what they were asked to do. It was like, you know, we did like, there was like, you know, some sort of housing plan with bubbles. And but everything that was said and done as part of those meetings, I don't think was appreciated and was politicized. I felt like it was kind of a setup where even though I don't agree with all your guys' positions, I appreciate your guys' time and your talent. And I think a lot of that was looked over, and there were probably some hard feelings. And people twisted and turned the outcome of those meetings because of the housing being an issue. And the work that you guys did, it didn't go anywhere because I don't think City Council agreed with it. And I just didn't see any good come of that. And that's what I'm afraid of with this grant and this housing agenda that we have. You know, housing is a huge issue. If you go on Zillow right now, there's three listings for all of Sammamish. So not just affordable housing, housing in general, affordable housing, there's a crisis. And, you know, I'm still trying to gear whether or not Sammamish, if they care, or, you know, do they care? Do you guys care? Does City Council care? Does the city care? Is that something that we should go work on and be a part of solving? You know, it sounds like, you know, the focus is, oh, no, no. We're not going to worry about that until we get fixed the traffic. But four years later, we're still barely into the traffic. So I want to ask a question. Can we do both? Housing and traffic? Are they both issues? What are we doing on traffic? How best shall we use our time? And what can we actually go get done and fix? So I just hope that maybe Chair Baughman, you can go to council and say, hey, do you want us to work on this? And whatever we give you, will it be used? For better, for worse, and used in a positive way, not in a way to get us thrown off the Planning Commission or not retain on the Planning Commission or have people quit from the Planning Commission? I mean, I just would hate to see this be used as a wedge issue when nobody really wanted it to begin with. Not that it's not needed. I think it is needed. And, you know, that's what I've been preaching for all these years. But I just want to see the city's business get done and us be effective and have efficient meetings. And a part of me feels like if we just run from one thing to another, back to another, that nothing gets done. And maybe that's the agenda. And I don't want that to be the agenda either. So I hope maybe you guys don't, you know, something I don't know, or maybe Chair Baughman, you know, something I don't know. But I would like us to be lockstep and bound with the City Council, with the City Manager, with City Staff, that this is the plan of what we're going to go do. And if we need to maybe team up with them as far as retreats or whatever we do to outline our work plan for the year, I'd like to see that happen because I'm all about getting stuff done. You guys are all very bright. They're very bright. Surely there's something we can work on as a city to accomplish something rather than cause division and, you know, not be on the same page. So I'm all for it. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. I look forward to attending the meetings this year and offering input. And even when I don't agree with you guys, like, I still like everyone, and I don't want to see anybody get canned or their feelings hurt or resign over stuff that you might say in these meetings because you're asked to talk about certain issues. So I just, I just want this to be positive and productive. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. I will go ahead and promote our next caller. Mr. Stigney, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Congratulations, Mark and Retuja, for great years served. And I echo what James Eastman and Josh Amato said. I personally hope that the City Council reappoints you to the Planning Commission. You've done a great job. And Retuja, wherever you're off and whatever you're doing, you do great at it. So I'm excited for your future as well, and I know you'll stay involved in Sammamish. And by the way, I looked on Channel 21. There are three people watching on Channel 21. I'm on my computer on Zoom, but it doesn't show me how many people are listening. So I guess Kelly Hildy's son is probably not on tonight. Anyway, I turned in a lot of information. I'm not going to read through it. I'm not going to go over it. But I encourage you guys to look at it, and I encourage you to reach out and chat with me a bit. I'd like to give a little historical contest, context, I'm sorry, not a contest. Mayor Karen Moran has been involved in Sammamish since well before incorporation. I think her involvement started in the mid 1990s. So did mine. We both have a lot of historical perspective. I was involved in the first comp plan somewhat, not a ton. Far more involved in the Town Center Subarea Plan, which was done in 2004. The Town Center Plan from 2004 to 2006. Excuse me, that was, let me correct myself. The Town Center Plan was 2006 to 2008, adopted in mid 2008. Development regulations on Town Center somewhat involved in, not too much involved in. But starting in 2011, when the Economic Development Strategic Plan that was proposed that never got adopted, and in early 2013 especially from them, since late 2013 until now, I've attended every meeting, working on policy, interest in housing. There's a lot to talk about behind the scenes, heavily involved in the second comprehensive plan, heavily involved in the Housing Strategy Plan from 2017 to late 18 that was adopted in early 19, which James Eastman mentioned. And that is the issue that the recommendation version that the Planning Commission unanimously approved had several major policy directional changes that I could sum up to say would be looking to finding out what needs and wants are for housing over a cycle of life and incorporating that into future planning. And Mr. Eastman is correct, the City Council stripped that addendum out of the plan. I'm not going to go into all that here, but happy to talk in greater detail. All these things are done typically for reasons of their own. And what we need is level setting, good information, comprehensive information. And I'd like to make a very clear ice statement. I am strongly advocating and have for many years to get all the data. Look at the stuff that I've turned in. This is not the first time it's been asked for. I'm going to go into that a tiny bit. And again, this is an extemporaneous comment. It's not reading through the materials that I sent in or wrote in today in my two comments. But getting the data should level set our decisions. I agree with Commissioner Labby on that point significantly. People have different opinions on the direction Sammamish should go in regards to housing supplies. All those opinions should be informed by level setting data and try to come together as a community to embrace the different views and rationale before the data and after the data, and see if we can put the major division points. Many of you may or may not be on social media. It's crystal clear that most of these issues are over. What is the shape of the future in Sammamish? And good level setting information that does not change based on your opinion. If you're for the current comp plan, which significantly minimized housing relative to King County capacity, it's amazing how much. Or the Town Center Plan that was rooted Or the Town Center Plan that was rooted in a significant portion of our growth target and only anecdotally knew that different and diverse type housing was needed. That's a good step. But the actual numbers behind what are the numbers needed for a community like ours over time were not there. The current, a lot of current political position is very low-growth, and the current EIS ultimately leads to that path, but I'm not here to talk about that tonight. I've been involved, and many people are aware of enrich and sustain optimized housing supply based on information. None of these are what King County did. And it's very interesting to note that King County, from 1980 to 1999, add incorporation, including what's in the pipeline, put over 15,000 houses, closer to 16,000, in what's in the Sammamish city limits. Sammamish has allowed about 3,300 to be added. That's like 21% the pace of King County. But neither King County nor Sammamish have adequately planned for the internal needs and wants of those in the community over time. And I echo and agree with what many commissioners talked about tonight. I'm not going to put any words in your mouth.
Fifteen seconds?
Am I, you know, almost out of time?
Correct, fifteen seconds.
Okay. This is about retention, not attraction. It's about complete information and making good informed decisions, and I welcome you all to reach out and shoot the breeze. There's a lot to cover. Have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stigney. I will go ahead and unmute our final caller. Ms. Victor, whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Mary Victor, and I live at 208 Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I don't know if we need to say that again. Anyway, I had sent in something because on page eight of 12 in tonight's packet, they had mentioned the missing middle. And that's just not a term for here or for Seattle or for State of Washington. I believe it's a much broader term. I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, and I still own land there. My family's there. So I also do their meetings sometimes. And recently, they had a packet from the Missing Middle, which I'm showing on the screen instead of my face. And I was able to flip it around so you can read it. But it talks about how to think small and build big. And the graphic is actually from Optico's design. And it's a really cool image of the different types of housing that you get. So I highlighted the words there. I won't read them to you because you have it as an email. And I'm sorry for the couple typos I had in my email text, but I think it's a very important thing to know about. Middle housing isn't the big giant stuff, and it's not single-family homes or ADUs. It's kind of everything in between, and it kind of goes up. And I will tell you, October 19th, I believe, there was the state lobbyists that we've hired. There are two, Luke and Nick. They're great lobbyists for our city. They've gotten us a lot of money. They had done a what's upcoming in the legislature, and I had emailed in, and I know David Pyle got a copy of it. Apparently, even though the current legislature session, which is short and it's only 60 days and starts January 10th, they're probably going to talk about housing affordability. So one thing the State of Washington will probably try to do is anywhere you can build a single-family home, they'd want you to be able to build a duplex and also push ADUs. The ADUs tend to also be the most expensive type of way to add housing. So even though people that want to do it, they don't, which maybe is one reason why the numbers are so low, even we've made our code update for that. So also, in Luke and Nick's lobbyist report, they had mentioned that there was a Senate bill in California. So they had adopted the duplexes and higher-level zoning in 2020, 20 to 21. And Oregon also had, and Oregon's a little bit faster along. They're on like their second year of it. So it is coming to other places. And the housing crisis, which James Eastman referred to, it is real. There's a lot of stuff happening right now that I don't know. Like, I know we have to collect data, and we totally should get all the data that's listed in the steps and all the economic and demographic groups that I know Paul Stigney has sent in because he's been tracking those. But we need to make sure that we aren't just skewing it because right now the housing prices are so crazy that you don't want it to, you know, kind of wipe out everything that came before. There are a lot of ways that you can get other data. TC Labby had some great questions on that. For example, like, there are seniors that lived or still live maybe in the city that were getting a reduction in their taxes because they are, I think you have to be 40,000 or something below, and you get a reduction in your taxes. Then when you sell your house, you have to pay those off or whatever. So it's not a forever thing. King County has those numbers, and maybe you can't get the individual people's names, but they have counts of them, so that could be looked at. I also, for the last five or six years, have been attending water district meetings. And I know with the COVID stuff, they've had to keep track of how many people need to have, like, helpful payments during COVID because they're either struggling or whatever. And even though they can't release individual names on you, I think both the water districts ought to have some of that. So, so those are some ways. Also, with the water district meetings that I've been going to, SPW about six months ago did a thing on where their people live because if you have a water main that breaks or if you have a water issue or if there's an earthquake, those people need to come in and do the emergency services. And a lot of their workforce cannot live anywhere in Sammamish. So they actually did a how far away are they, and how many are in Everett, and how many are in Black Diamond, Maple Valley? So they probably have statistics. I would imagine Andrew Stevens and Eastside Fire and Rescue would also have similar numbers for those. Police Force probably has those. Lake Washington School District might even be able to give you information on how many teachers, like, live in the same city that they teach in or would live in the Sammamish area or something or other. So there's a lot of sources, and I do agree that that's something that the consultant should come up with. But there are a lot of ways to do that. And I thought that the concerns people brought up were really good. I think even if you went to Safeway and stuff, I don't know if they could say how many of their people use the access bus or how many of their people live in the city or don't or commute to work. So there's probably a way to get that. The other things I wanted to say are, I'm looking through my notes here. There are a lot of things that can be done. I think Kelly Hildy referred to the Town Center Plan. But if you keep affordable housing, like the people that have smaller houses, if those are protected somehow, that way, when people do move out, we keep them. Because if everybody just thinks, oh, I need to build a bigger house to stay, they're going to do that. We also have, I would just say, three general areas in the city. One is critical areas. We're not supposed to be building in critical areas that have landslide and erosion, but we still are. We should not be putting big houses there, and we should not allow duplexes and other stuff there. In fact, we should do transfer of development rights to get those somewhere else. So we need to have kind of code and regulations for that. And then in Town Center, we did put, we paid it for the streets, and we paid extra money to get the sewer and water done at the same time, and it's sitting there, not building because of the traffic. But we do need to have a different housing mix in there. And Town Center is, I think, about 2% of the city. And then the other three centers, which is Sammamish Highlands, which is down here by Inglewood Road, QFC near Pine Lake, and Kohani. Those are the other three centers, and that's only 1%. So 2% in Town Center, 1% in the other centers. We've got 3% in Center. So 97% of the city is where the housing is. And we've got a lot of R1, R4, and R6 zoned areas. And those areas, we really don't want those to redevelop and, like, developers buy the empty lot next door and then try to buy 10 houses on the street to redevelop those into 4,000-square-foot homes. So we do need to look at those. The other thing that's coming on your plate is with Phase 3 of the development regs, you're going to do PUDs, Planned Urban Development. Our Plan Unit Development allows you ways to change and make your units work better so things can work better. Those can also help with affordability and number of housing. And I think anytime you're trying to get affordability, you're going to have to give density as incentives to builders. So those were the things that I could think of that need to get done. Please try to get all the data that you can. This is the time to get it. And before I run out of my seven minutes here, I wanted to say thank you so much to the whole Planning Commission, but particularly to Mr. Baughman. I hope that the chair will continue on. Rituja, indepently, you've been great. In fact, your comments tonight were excellent examples of what you can contribute. Thank you for asking them. I do hope Mark runs again and is selected. And thank you for the efficient, effective meetings and discussions and the respect that you have for public comment.
Great. Thank you for your comment, Mary, and I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Baughman.
I clicked it, and it didn't go on mute, so I'll try again. Thanks. Evan or Kelly, do you have anything else to cover, comments on the future calendar or anything? Any other business?
Nothing on my end.
All right, great. Then we are done. If someone would move to adjourn.
Second.
I moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. This may be my last meeting. I'll say once again, thank you, everybody. It's been fun. Have a great evening, and we'll see you at Starbucks very soon.
Take care. It's been great working with you, Rituja also.
All right. Thanks. And now I'm going to go find out what is on TV on Thursday nights. I really have no idea. Bye, everybody.
Bye.